Just while they're setting that up, we have a big crowd and soon everybody's here for the meeting. So if you just comment and... But I will also mix the public at some point, but that's not yet. So you just have to be able to do the presentation at the start. Make your own statements before and then we will talk to the public. What do you think, sir? Set it up. Ready to go. All right, let's go. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Ivan Perrin. I'm the Chief Legal Officer at Roseland Residential Trust, a division of Matt Callan. I have with me this evening Jesse A. Bear of Ratman Sawyer, our counsel, Katie Cruz of Handcock Associates, our engineer, and Mark Major of VMY Architects, our project architect. With me, they will be presenting our application and addressing any questions the board has this evening. We are here tonight to address our application for definitive site plan approval for the development of eighty-four units and 2,000 square feet of retail space on five Salem Square, commonly known as the Church Parcel. It is essential to note that our site plan application is in full compliance with zoning and land use law and no variances are being requested this evening. Additionally, we believe that we have addressed all comments of the planning department submitted in response to our application. As many of you tonight already know, Roseland is currently developing the project adjacent to the Church Parcel, known as One Forty-Five Front at City Square. This is the first luxury community being constructed in Worcester in years and when completed will contain three hundred and sixty-five apartments in two phases. Additionally, it will contain a four-story parking garage, a swimming pool, a ten-thousand-square-foot clubhouse with amenities such as a business center, lounge areas, state-of-the-art fitness center, yoga and spin studio, and a golf simulator. Additionally, there will be about 12,000 square feet of retail with a variety of uses of the property. We are currently negotiating leases for a majority of that space. Initial occupancy of the project is anticipated for January 2018 with full completion of construction by the end of 2018. Needless to say, we're extremely excited about the completion of the project and our contribution to the renaissance that is in full swing in downtown Worcester. Although tonight's hearing is only about site plan approval and not about the preservation of demolition of the church, I know many of you are here in regard to that, so I wanted to briefly address that before we begin our site plan approval application. Without doubt, the church is a beautiful building and I can assure you that no one at Roseland takes a demolition of a former church or any house of worship lightly. However, we cannot ignore the fact that since the church was shuttered almost ten years ago, significant time and money has been expended by the current owners, potential developers, preservation groups, architects and engineers in an effort to repurpose the church, all without success. While it is our understanding that many people expressed interest, none of these expressions of interest translated into an economically feasible plan backed by a developer or an investor. Moreover, since its shuttering, the church has fallen into a state of significant disrepair and now poses a safety issue. As you can see, scaffolding and netting has been placed around the church to prevent it from falling and damaging other buildings. Roseland not helping what's transpired over the past ten years as it relates to the church. However, I can definitively state, as evidenced by our current $100 million commitment and our anticipated investment of $30 million for this project, Roseland is committed to the continued revitalization and renaissance of Worcester. At this point, I would like to turn the field over to the floor over to our professionals to present our application. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mark Peter. I'm the project architect from VMY Architects out of Massachusetts. I'd like to orient you to the building on the site. This is the site plan and first floor plan. This is Trumbull Street, Franklin Street, Church Street. Worcester Common is right here, City Hall is right up here. Are you familiar with it? We're just down the street. So the main entrance to the project is off of Trumbull Street, which is directly across the street from the main entrance to the building that's under construction right now over the first phase of the project. That entrance is also accessible from the back, from the parking lot. A two-way entrance off of Trumbull Street to eighty-six surface parking spaces in the back. Some of these parking spaces are under the building, so they're partially covered. We have a drive-in inlet only off of Church Street, a one-way in. We have a second building entrance off of Church Street, an elevator lobby there too, plus a back entrance from the parking lot. The building is a... As you can see, the building is a four-story building. It's going to have eighty-four apartments, twenty-one studio apartments, thirty-nine one-bedroom apartments, and twenty-four two-bedroom apartments. All the apartments have full baths and two bedrooms. Two-bedroom apartments are what we call splitting bedrooms with a living room configured in the middle and bedroom suites on the side of bedroom room with their own full bathroom. Full kitchens in each luxury apartment, laundry facility, washer dryer in each apartment. Each apartment has their own individual air conditioner and heating system and hot water system. This is the facade on Franklin Street. Facade on Church Street, what you would see from the common side. And the main entrance facade on Trumbull Street. You can see the materials will mimic those same ones used on the first phase, City Square One, brick veneer with a couple colors with some aesthetic accent striping, fiber cement siding in multiple configurations, metal trim, back trim, or plain type fiber cement siding. As you can see, the facade is articulated in and out due to we are not completely parallel with Franklin Street. So as the building moves up Franklin Street, it steps back, back and forth to create in and outs, to create a lively facade. We also have... The building has a flat roof, although mechanical equipment is on the roof. We have articulated the parapets at different heights and with different overhangs and configurations. Also give aesthetically pleasing facade. Thank you.
Is that for the presentation or...?
Mr. Chair, a few small utility notes. They must use five-foot standard cornerstones for the driveway returns and maintain the sidewalk grade across the driveway rather than having handicap ramps as proposed. City Standard eight HDR-18 must be used for catch basing connections. Manmole must be installed at the sewer connection at Trumbull Street. An aisle width of 24 feet must be maintained in all locations along the parking area. There's one location that it constricts to about eighteen feet, which would need EPW to have some concern. There's a proposed curb bump out in Trumbull Street, which we're concerned about creating a pounding issue. Design may need to be modified. And lastly, the domestic and fire protection, water connections, they must be split at the property lines with curb shut-offs there rather than adjacent to the building. Thank you.
Thank you. So is yours with that?
Correct, yes.
Charlie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I believe the applicant said, again, our presentation, this is a by right development, which means that the use itself is not really the question before the board. It's the layout and design of the site. Sorry to remind the board and the audience of that. So with that being said, I did want to talk about some specific aspects of the design. Access to the parking area is proposed from Church Street and Trumbull Street. The main entrance is at Trumbull Street. We think that's a good location for it. The parking is proposed behind the building, which is just how we want it in downtown in an urban area. So you've got the building to the front and the parking to the rear and the access is to the more minor side streets. So we think that's a good design. There is a second entrance that's proposed from Church Street. That would be a one-way entrance only, so there would be no exiting traffic there. In addition to providing access from the west side of the property, that also will help with fire department access, which I know is of concern to fire departments that allow them to drive quicker in and through the parking lot, assisting in any operations if they were to have them there. We were particularly concerned about that west face of the property because it faces the common. The common's an obviously an important public space for the city of Worcester. It's also a historic space. It's listed on the State National Register of Historic Places. So in earlier iterations of the design, there was less building amassing at that end, less landscaping. There was some parking that was proposed and we thought it was important that the applicant activate that part of the development to a greater extent. So now you'll see that the building has been extended to really occupy that corner to a greater extent. There's retail proposed there now on the first floor, which we believe is important for this type of development. We want to see mixed use development downtown to help activate the street level. And then the other change that we were requested is for that driveway that enters, one-way from Church Street. It was originally proposed and it's shown in the plans that you have is 22 feet because it is just a one-way driveway. We're asking that the applicant narrow that down to 15 feet and include additional provisions to clearly demarcate that it is a one-way driveway. So that'll help reduce the visual interruption of the driveway and also ensure that we don't have traffic coming the wrong way out of it. In addition to that, we are requesting, I believe this was in EPW's comments as well, that the sidewalk be maintained across both driveway cuts. We don't want to see this. It shouldn't be the type of curb cut that looks like a street. Instead, we want to keep the sidewalk at a level grade as you see in all developments in the downtown area. There are eighty-six parking spaces proposed for the development. There are none required in the BG six zone. That's about one per unit, which is a good amount of parking in this location. Obviously, the site has excellent access to transit being a close proximity to the bus terminal as well as Union Station. We are requesting that a few minor modifications be made to the parking layout. There is, if you look on page five of nine of the review memo, there is a spot right where the parking aisle jogs. So if you're coming in from Trumbull Street and you're making that left turn, there's not sufficient space there to make that turn. So by removing one parking space, that'll provide sufficient aisle space. And similarly, the... Get my directions correct. The northwestern most parking lot is a dead-end parking lot. So we'd request that the parking aisle extend at least six feet beyond the last parking spaces so you can actually back out of those spaces and exit back out of the parking lot. The applicant is proposing interior bicycle storage. So that's a nice amenity that we like to see. They are also proposing tenant's storage spaces. We did have a question on that. We couldn't tell if those were accessed from the interior of the building or if a portion of them were accessed from the exterior of the building or if it's a combination of both.
Combination.
That's how it's depicted on the plan.
Majority of them are in two sides.
Thank you. The design is consistent with the use dimensional and siding requirements of zoning ordinance, including those in the CCOD, where we have additional provisions to site the building up close to the street and to incorporate certain basic design elements such as articulated facades and different materials and that type of thing. So with that said, we do have recommended conditions of approval on page three of nine. I've covered most of these and the rest, I believe, are minor label or annotation comments. The applicant has communicated to us that all of our comments were acceptable to them, but we would ask if you do approve this that you keep the conditions as part of the approval because we haven't received plans that reflect them at this time. We just quickly look over this and see if there's any others that are important to note. I think that covers it. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So I am going to open it up to the public. I'm assuming everybody here sees this project. Just to clarify a couple of things, what is not before the board is the church, the use of the church, alternative uses for the church. They have life demolition delay. It's expired. We're opening up the church down tomorrow. So what we're going to focus on tonight is just the site plan. So I want to make sure people focus their comments on the site plan that we have for us and not the church. If the general consensus or the conversation speaks on about the church, then we will stop taking comments. This is not a public hearing, so... But that being said, I will open it up. I'll just take your name for the record.
I'm Deborah Packard. I'm the Executive Director of Preservation Worcester and I'm here representing the Board of Directors of Preservation Worcester and the Reimagined Notre Dame Committee. Preservation Worcester's mission is historic preservation and excellence in new design. The Reimagined Notre Dame Committee is a group of approximately 20 individuals who have been working tirelessly to prevent the destruction of Notre Dame. This group consists of architects, college professors, business owners, concerned residents and preservationists who have been meeting for well over a year and meeting weekly since the beginning of 2017. My comments tonight are the official comments of Preservation Worcester and the Reimagined Notre Dame Committee. I'd like to make it clear that Preservation Worcester has a history of working with the city, building owners and private developers on goals that are not just positive to the community, but also private developers as well. Our role is not to be obstructionist to private developers, to work collaboratively with them and the city toward winning outcomes that are in the long-term best interest of the city. We can point to the recent relocation of the Sterns Tavern and the recent restoration of the Fire Alarm Telegraph Building as cornerstone bank as examples of collaborative projects between the public and private sectors and Preservation Worcester. We are excited about the downtown renaissance and feel that it's important to have a balance of old and new residential and commercial buildings and we feel that Notre Dame is the part of that. She stands as a majestic structure and reminds us of our rich immigrant heritage. We feel it's regrettable that the application being considered fails to recognize the historic significance of the church and the impact new construction will have on the site and the nearby common, which is a park and which is on the National Register of Historic Places. The application states that the site plan does not impact historic, cultural and architectural resources and does not impact parks. I have a whole section about the church that I guess I need to leave out of this. But we have developed plans. We know that historic buildings, time over time, have been reused in a positive way. We are asking the developer to keep the church standing, to consider it as a lone structure or integrate it into the plans of the proposed surface parking lot, which has been said is not required. If the developer would, they could leave the church standing. They could put their new construction in that area where the parking lot is. If they want parking, they could locate it under the building. Clearly, this won't be the last time a downtown historic building is threatened by demolition. Going forward, we really need a better process for planning and for development, a process with a shared community vision that welcomes public participation.
Good evening.
Thank you. Over the past year and a half, I've been very interested in what's been going on and what I see is more building of apartments, 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 apartments. I'm Elaine Bofaro.
I'm sorry, your name for the record.
Elaine Bofaro, 24 Blackstone Drive in Worcester. And what I don't see is a real large plan for the city of Worcester. We have the courthouse that's coming up with apartments. We have the 385 that we're building. We're putting another 84. We just put another bit in that whole area. We continue to put apartments in there. We need a plan. I look at Providence and I look at what they have and what they've kept. And we're not doing that. We're kind of just building and building and building. What I'd like to see, and I'm talking to this, is something that really resonates for Worcester and keeps Worcester. My kids can come back to Worcester and say, "I was there." We don't have that and we're continuing to go by the wayside to build new structures, new apartments. I'm looking for a plan, a plan that encompasses what Worcester has and what Worcester has stoked for. You know, I've been here long enough to know that I saw the downtown go away. I'm giving away my age, but I've seen that in all those apartments and all those large buildings for those that may not have been around at that point. All those buildings, those manufacturing buildings, all of that just got wiped away and we put in Worcester Center and now we're back to Main Street. We're back to the street that connects. So I think there needs to be more of a plan for Worcester and I'm not in favor of this at all. I just think that we're just adding and adding and adding to something, but there isn't a plan down there and we haven't kept much of what Worcester stands for. I'm very... I would like to see us keep what we have, work on what we have and find people to do that. And I think that Preservation Worcester has done a tremendous amount of work and what they've done, and they need to be given the time to look at that and continue their quest to keep the church and to keep Worcester and have a downtown that people can come back to and say, "I was there once before." So, thank you.
Thank you.
Elaine Gardella, longtime Worcester citizen. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I would like to urge the City of Worcester Planning Board to reconsider your approval for the submitted site plans by a developer to build an eighty-four-unit apartment complex on the site of the historic and iconic Notre Dame, a Canadian building. The criteria for approval states that site plans must not impact a historic or cultural resource. The Romanesque revival-style building meets the criteria of both. As mentioned previously, this structure represents the extensive French-Canadian community of immigrants in Worcester. And most importantly, the significance is with the unique historic architectural style, which is unmatched in any building in the city of Worcester. As mentioned before, it has been recognized as a cultural and historic resource by various institutions in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is listed on Massachusetts Cultural Resource Information System as well as Preservation Massachusetts' Most Endangered Historic Buildings. So I think it's pretty clear-cut that this building, if it can be repurposed, and I do believe that it can, meets that criteria. I would like to urge in this public forum for the current owners and developers of City Square Two to work with advocacy groups and concerned citizens to find new developers who have the experience, the expertise and the commitment to repurpose this irreplaceable architectural treasure. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Terrance Quay, 1117 Federal Street. I'm concerned that the current proposal adds additional foot traffic crossing the Cross Street and we don't fully know the effect of the increase of foot traffic from One Forty-Five Front Street project. I'm concerned about the traffic, but also the safety of pedestrians. I would like to go ahead and plans to improve crosswalks, signals or visually impaired communities. Thank you.
Did you want to ask that? It's a long time.
Are the most up-to-date signals. They have all the handicap accessible amenities. So I'm not... I don't believe EPW has any concerns with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Spantina Luke of Worcester. And while I wear many hats, I am here as a citizen today. And I am concerned about the church. And we have said that it was merely a site plan application for design and layout, but the approval of the design and layout directly impacts a building that has historic significance in Worcester and that is a piece of public art, frankly. When we think of human civilization, it's marked by symbols and those symbols are always artifacts, buildings and monuments. We think of the pyramids, the Eiffel Tower, Mount Rushmore, the White House. And thank God, they didn't have to go through a site plan application. But we are here dealing with a site plan application. And what we see when we look out the window at all the construction going on is plywood boxes that almost look like the cardboard with a lifespan maybe of 30 or 40 years, not hundreds of years. And here we have a building that was intended to last hundreds of years that has architecture of elements and significance that cannot be replaced today. And so I am asking that we look at it as a piece of Worcester history, indispensable piece of Worcester history. And although it was originally a house of worship and I never entered that building as a house of worship, when we dismiss it as not economically feasible and not safe, well, I've heard those same things with Union Station and Mechanics Hall and several other... same things with Union Station and Mechanics Hall and several other projects in Worcester. And we overcame those limitations. A city that disrespects its past and tramples on its past is a city with no soul. So I am pleading with, not asking, not encouraging, pleading with both the city side and the private developers to incorporate that building in the project. And let's not have another series of boxes made out of plywood and fiber cement siding and brick veneer. It's not adequate when we look at the building that is now going to be a subject of destruction. So again, I am pleading with everyone in this room to save that building, incorporate it and respect it as a piece of Worcester history, and even have it be part of the crown of jewels from the old courthouse to Mechanics Hall, the Union Station, and let's include the church in that crown of jewels. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, good evening. My name is Charles Beduski, and I live at 204 Stafford Street. I have a question for you. According to the zoning ordinance, public trees must be protected from dust or any other hazardous caused by construction. So, what is it?
What is the protection?
What is the protection? What is the plan?
For these public trees?
Pardon?
For the public trees on the site?
For trees that are outside there, for any tree. It says that they are supposed to be protected. The city ordinance says they're supposed to be protected from any dust or any hazardous material. You have trees across the street in the common area, so...
I would perhaps ask the developer to refer to his plans and if they have any plans, perhaps they're going to protect these trees, and if they think there's any concerns. Are you referring, through you, Mr. Chair, are you referring to the trees in the park across the street?
Any tree. According to the ordinance, the city says any tree.
And if I may, if it were clear that a tree were harmed by the developer during the course of this project, they would be responsible for replacing it?
Well, replacing it, the ordinance says protecting it. So that's replacing it, it's not protecting it.
Through the chair, I believe the primary intent of that regulation is to prevent someone from moving, pardon me, removing a street tree that, you know, without proper permission to do so. In this case, and I'm going off the memory here, but there are not a lot of street trees that may be adjacent to the construction site. The contractor, when they do proceed a construction, would need to ensure that they protect any trees that do exist. If they did harm them, as Mr. Leifert said, they would have to replace those trees. Obviously, a new tree is different than a well-established tree, but it frankly hasn't been a problem, we see with other large developments in the city. You know, we don't have a recurring issue with street trees getting harmed by these types of construction projects. So I'm happy to have the developer address any measures they might take to do that, but and I'd ask the building department to, you know, if they have additional information to comment, but I, based on my knowledge, it hasn't been a recurring problem.
Yeah, I've been looking at the plan, there are some trees to come down, some to be protected, typical construction.
Mr. Chair, to add one more thing, they are responsible for keeping their dust down using, you know, any sort of measures, calcium or any other measures to keep the dust down, so...
We've lost enough trees in the city now, okay? It's tough to say. Go drive up by Blackstone Street, it looks like a wazza. I don't think downtown looks like a wazza. I come downtown with my kids, everyone's going to watch the common. I don't want to take a seat, but there's no trees because I want my granddaddy's, and where'd the birds go?
I can see that. Okay. Looking at the site plan, there are obviously trees coming down.
I mean, typically, prior to commencement of any kind of construction, we would implement a construction management plan, and one part of that thing would be to capture any kind of debris coming off the site with the idea of any, there would be no off-site impacts from the construction itself. And we would certainly be amenable to any additional conditions to board the one place with respect to protection of trees. That's a pretty standard construction manager.
Yeah, dust control, yeah. It's not just the trees get harmed by dust control. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Earl Turner. I live at 2 Common Place, Worcester, Mass. I'm a taxpayer. I am owner of multiple buildings. I actually own buildings in the Vernon Hill area, the Crawford Street area. I can look from my dark windows at downtown Worcester. I can look at the glass building, I can look at everything that's going on. I personally don't care. I look at mechanical stuff on top of a roof down here, okay? I noticed today, coming down Green Street, I'm looking at the building, it's a big wooden box, and that concerns me. Because if there's a fire in that building, what's going to happen? I'm under the understanding there was a fire in that building today, and that whole area was chaos. What's going to happen if there's a bigger fire in that building? I'm also concerned about what's going to happen when the D C U center let people out at night, and this whole area becomes a massive congested area. With 449 apartments, it has the potential of problems. This gentleman says that there was a site plan done, a traffic survey done, not on this site, and if it was for some other site, it should have been for that site, not this site, because this is a new hearing that I'm hearing today. So that, to me, is a false statement on this gentleman's part. I don't believe that these developers have Worcester's best interest in their heart, because they're going to do away with a beautiful historic building that's been there for a long time. They could easily convert that building into a Haymarket Square idea or something like that and keep the building, keep the facade of that building. They don't live in Worcester. They live someplace else in their nice houses. They're going to come here and take money, and they're going to spend some money here, but they're going to be rewarded greatly for what they're going to spend here. But they don't live here. They don't have to look at what they're building. And personally, I don't think any of them really care, because honestly, they're in the market to make money. They don't care what we have to look like, look at. They don't care if you fellows have to look out the Bag of City Hall and look at this big wooden box that looks terrible. So my opinion is that I think this planning board should sit down and say, "Listen, we need to come up with something different." Because 449 apartments, there's a lot of apartments in that area. This gentleman, this gentleman here says, "Well, we've got 86 parking spots for this base. You've got 84 tenants." I have nine tenants. I have three three-deckers up in the Vernon Hill area. And I'll tell you what, there's not one of my tenants that has one car. Never mind one-ninth of a car, because these guys got less than one car per tenant. So where are all these people going to park? In today's age, you've got a husband and a wife, where everybody's, the husband's working, the wife's working, they both have cars. So if you're going to propose 84 units, you should have 168 car spots for them. They don't have the proper parking, and I don't think they have Worcester's best interest in their heart. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve McNutt. I live at 274 Coburn Ave, and I'd like to know how much consideration was actually put by the developer and the city to give in the increased pedestrian traffic to and from the commuter rail station at peak commuting times? I'm concerned this project, additional 400-plus residents in 145 French Street will back the traffic on Foster Street and the crosswalks. I ask that there be an updated traffic study showing the impact of the pedestrian traffic caused by the Salem Square project. The last thing I want to hear is that the city will have to pay for another sky bridge costing the taxpayers millions. It's hot enough to get from one end side of the city to the other, as it is, it takes forever. I missed doctor appointments, and now we're going to have all these people come in, you know, just cluttering it up even more. And if they're going to add new foot bridges or anything like that, you shouldn't have to think about that, that's basically all I have.
Thank you.
My name is Casey Starr, and I also reside in the city of Worcester. I just wanted to echo some of the comments that we already heard today, that the application to indicate that there's no historical significance is obviously false, and I would also say it's pretty insulting. It's insulting to our city's history. It's insulting to our community that lives here. It's insulting to our children. I have a daughter who's two, like, just chose to buy a house in the city and raise her here. And I tell you, I want to be able to bring her and show her the history of our cities and our neighborhoods. I want to be able to show her beautiful buildings that will never be constructed again. I want to take a moment and just thank you as a planning board for your service. I often, this is a volunteer gig, and it's a lot of work. And I often think about one day that I will join the board. And I would ask all of you today, I recognize that this is about a site plan that may or may not actually be aligned with some of the regulations that you need to check off, but we all know this is about something much larger. And when you all chose to take on this responsibility and this role, I wonder why you chose to do so and the difference you wanted to make in our city. Because you do make a difference in our city, and this is an opportunity. This, I recognize this may not be your one opportunity, but this is a huge opportunity. And whether or not there's going to be other things down the road that affect it right here and tonight, you guys have the power, right? So I thank you for your service. I ask you to consider our city, our history, our children, and the amazing, amazing building that will never, ever be built again.
My name is Joyce Mandell, and I'm a resident of Worcester, and I absolutely hate public speaking, so here I am. And this has gotten me out here that I need to say something. So I started a blog a year ago. It's called Jane Jacobs in the Ru, and it's about building a better Worcester. And what are the elements? Some of the elements are something that other people have mentioned, the importance of the creative reuse of old buildings, the old with the new, you know, the excitement of that, and also building neighborhoods that promote walkability. So I want to again emphasize, and I love what Casey just said, you know, the importance of, this is our community, and we live here, and this is, I was shocked when I saw in the application that they put "no impact" under "historical resources." So I want to reiterate that. Also, I have a concern about the parking, you know, the surface parking. One of the things, if we're wanting to create a walkable, dense downtown where people are going back and forth, you know, this whole idea of having parking lots adjacent to buildings is very problematic for that. So I also think that regardless of what happens here tonight, there's some need for some deeper discussions in this city. We have a need for design review here, you know, and having some sort of standards. We have a need of looking at the materials. People are talking about the boxes that are out there. This church is something that has lasted for so long, and as many other people have said, what kind of building materials are they using, these boxes? This is our city. Also, even something like a minimum maintenance ordinance to prevent the demolition by neglect, you know? They should have been doing the minimum of maintenance to make sure that the church didn't get to a point where they want, they could make the excuse that it could be demolished. And the importance of having incremental development. So I just want to put it out there that we can't let this happen to Worcester, and I want to emphasize, you know, this is our history, and this is, this is something that we need to be able to maintain for our kids. And as other people have mentioned, the developers do not live here. We do. So, thank you.
I appreciate the support from everybody, but as you can tell, it's on the clap to give feedback, so it's kind of, we just put that down. I think the board understands the support for the project, not for the project, but for the church.
My name is Nicholas Worst. I'm a resident, longtime resident of Worcester, and I'm a member of Socialist Alternative here in Worcester. There is an issue going on at the existing project already, an issue of wage theft that I don't know if everybody's aware about. And I think that when we're talking about expanding this project, regardless of what happens at the new site, whether it's restoration, repurposing, or new construction, we need, the city needs to make sure that everything is being done to make sure that our community and our workers are not getting screwed over in the process or undercut. Whatever project happens here, the, it should be employing Worcester area workers at a fair and living wage, and it should be, I think it should be a union project. If apartments are constructed, I don't think they should be luxury apartments. I don't think they should be market-rate apartments. There are market-rate developments in downtown Worcester that are not full yet, and to say that we're going to add more luxury apartments into downtown Worcester, when that space could be used for affordable housing, possibly public housing, I think that's a huge insult, that saying that the people, the housing problem that we have in Worcester right now is not as important as the possibility of attracting new people to move into Worcester. We should be taking care of the people that live and work in Worcester right now and not worrying about these hypothetical people that haven't even moved into the existing market-rate housing in Worcester now. Why are they going to be moving into this luxury housing in Worcester in the future? So I think that this space seriously needs to be for the people of Worcester and needs to be developed for the people of Worcester, not for the benefit of these developers that people have said are not from Worcester and are going to be making money off of Worcester. So I seriously urge people to reconsider who is going to be developed in this.
...church in Worcester that brought in the American Guild of Organists, from all over, from the American Guild of Organists, and people who liked classical music. Second half, I can say I'm a go-sin at the Worcester Art Museum. I take a lot of pride to go there. One thing I worked downtown in my office is at 340 Main. The only group when I came into Worcester on a Saturday that I would see was one man, but there's many now, named Scott Abba from the Worcester Art Museum, who did a tour of photography, taking pictures of the buildings in Worcester. These buildings are slowly being destroyed. So we have a church that contributed to the A G O, to the Worcester Art Museum Photography Program. Clinical therapists, I can't say specifics, but I do go to this round building on Tiananmen Main Street, designed as a luxury building. They tried to rent it to businesses, offices, Section Eight, which is not a problem because it was built as luxury. It's really a very bad neighborhood. I remember going to see a client after five o'clock. So what you approved as a luxury building is now a very dangerous place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've lived in Worcester for 30 years.
Name for the record, please.
Excuse me?
Name for the record.
Gary Sanceri. And I'm concerned that we're bringing more and more parents downtown, and that's going to impact parking for all the existing businesses. We have a huge project that hasn't even opened yet. We have a huge project that hasn't even opened yet. And now we're proposing to add one hundred and eight more bedrooms and two more businesses and all their cars. There were all, then there were all renovations up and down Franklin Street from Dame to the library. We have no idea how many cars this is going to bring. It's gonna hurt businesses along Franklin Street, French Street, hurt the library parking lot, and they could add up for anyone trying to come here to our city. This developer should be required to pay for a detailed parking study for this entire area. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nikki Cantino. I actually just moved back to Massachusetts from Hartford, Connecticut. I lived in a building just like this. And then I also moved from Providence, Rhode Island, and lived in a building just like this. And then I also moved from New York City, Manhattan, Astoria, Queens, and lived in a building just like this. All the buildings I lived in, I moved to them because they had a pool, a puppy spa, which was great for my small dog. They also had a gym. They also had an in-ground pool. And, you know, the apartment was great. It was beautiful to the eyes. It was seven hundred and fifty square feet. The rent I would be paying would be affordable for two. The rent in Hartford was about, I think it was sixteen fifty a month. And it was seventeen hundred and fifty square feet. In Providence, Rhode Island, a little bit bigger, but the rent was a little cheaper. In New York City, it was twenty-five hundred. And, yeah, so I was able to afford that. And all of these things were really great. But I just moved back and guess where I went this weekend? I went to the Boulevard Diner and I got meatballs and eggs on Italian roll. And that building's been there since nineteen thirty-six, okay? So that's what I think. When I think of the city of Worcester, I think of downtown Worcester. I think of the places that our grandparents grew up. And I think of Coney Island. I think of Hot Dog Annie's. And to me, that's somewhere that I would want to bring my children. If I live here, I'm only gonna live here for a couple of years and then I'm gonna leave. They're not gonna be filled with memories and pictures of my children or my parents or my grandchildren. And, you know, that's to me what Worcester stands for. It stands for people, you know, on Bracton Hill that are Irish or your Indian community in Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, your Puerto Ricans, you know, your urban African-American community, people that are coming here from Kenya and raising their families. That's what the city of Worcester is all about. And if we're gonna get rid of that, then what are we gonna have for our own families? You know? So it's not about religion. It's about what the city has. And that's why I'm here. I haven't been back for ten years, you know? I did the whole college thing and I came back because that's what it means to me. So if you wanna think about that and consider it, I think that's probably all, why we're all here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Julie Dowen, born and raised in Worcester. And I certainly appreciate everybody coming here tonight talking about the historical relevance of the church, Worcester's heritage, and it's so very, very important. Since you had brought it up, you know, it was voted in June of two thousand and sixteen to be, Notre Dame was voted to be a historical asset to the people of the city of Worcester. And its demolition would be detrimental to the resources of Worcester. So that's very important because at that point, that was supposed to trigger Chapter Nine, Section Thirteen, where the city of Worcester did everything it could to refurbish over demolition. But regardless of talking about any of that, and I do appreciate the man who brought the comment up about the tree, I'm here because I'm here to talk about the law, the ordinance, procedure, and people's lives. I'm very shocked and upset tonight. And I've taken the time to put, and I'm sorry, it was raining when I came in, the application up along with all the highlights of what was not filled out correctly in my eyes. So therefore, I really don't believe you can take this vote tonight unless it's a negative vote in the eyes of the law. It really shouldn't have proceeded much further. It's kinda like putting a cart before the horse. You wanna talk about Roseland's development, but let's not talk about what's existing there right now. And that's part of why on the definitive site plan application that was filled out on June twenty-second of two thousand and seventeen by Donald Birch, he signed it in several different areas, notarized signatures. So he was one hundred percent aware of what was expected on this, pretty much a contract, application. I noticed that in two thousand and fourteen, when you approved the other site plans, at the end of that approval with conditions, it clearly states where good faith has to be followed in rendering these decisions and it's up to the people to do that. Well, I would turn that around and say, why don't we expect people to have good faith when they're actually filling out the applications? Because as you can see, when you go on, you have page one proving Donald Birch signed this. And we go into page two, everything seems okay. When we get to page three or so, it says, "Project Impact Statement." Check all areas that in a proponent's judgment impact of this project may occur. Positive impacts as well as adverse impacts should be indicated. Now here we have land development, Section A. And there's three columns, non, positive, adverse. Now when Mr. Birch filled this out, at the bottom, there's two areas that I believe should've been filled out as adverse, being the hazards and site safety and the historical, cultural, and archaeological resources. They were checked none. That's the start. Then as you go down to C, we have environmental issues. And that's one thing no one's talked about tonight, hazardous materials. I'm not an engineer, I'm not an attorney, but I can tell you for sure that any building built in nineteen twenty-nine most likely has asbestos in it. It could have zinc, it could have mercury, it could have all sorts of materials in it. And I don't see any supporting paperwork in any of these. Because I know people are talking about the fact that he put, "it's not historically relevant," which was false. But I want you to know, he did follow up with an amendment, including all of the rich resources of the macro waste thing and everything to that nature. But I do not see any follow-up on the hazardous waste removal plan. I don't see anything. In fact, I see none, none, none. Does this project require approval under NEPA? No.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt. I truly apologize that the application doesn't contain the information that you're mentioning. That's all part of the plans that they're gonna submit after the fact. So if there's something that you have that's irrelevant, we absolutely wanna hear it. But, you know, pulling apart the application, are you an attorney or a land planner of special wisdom?
It doesn't matter if I'm any of that, because what it is, I'm asking you, if anyone, if you're expecting anyone in the city of Worcester or anyone who's doing business with the city of Worcester, you expect one hundred percent truthfulness in filling out any application form. And this is just, that's why I'm going through this one by one. Because I'm saying right here, permits required. In fact, I'm gonna ask Mr. Roll right now, if he could clarify to Mr. Truman, they cannot go and tear that building down tomorrow. No demo permit has been pulled as of one-thirty today. And if there is hazardous materials on site, it requires a ten-day notice to the state of Massachusetts. So I do think it's relevant because these aren't issues that we're talking about after you approve this site plan. They're on here for a reason prior to. Here we have permits required. List any federal, state, or city Worcester agencies from which permits or other actions have been or will be signed. Now we have agency name, permit type, date filed. In my mind, it should say, "demo permit" will be being pulled for this project, naturally, from the city of Worcester. Then we would have DEP, hazardous waste removal. We don't even have one test. That's gonna affect to the people of the city of Worcester. If you have one pound of asbestos, that has to be removed from a specialist. And you can't look at asbestos and go, "Oh, that's asbestos." No, it has to be tested through a microscope. And Notre Dame Church was built in nineteen twenty-nine, although on the city's website it says nineteen fifty. But I can tell you there was refurbishing done in nineteen seventy-two. There was another three hundred thousand dollar facelift in nineteen ninety. And the asbestos was, didn't change until November of nineteen ninety. So we can't, there's no person here that can guarantee the safety of the hazardous materials in that church. So I'm asking the board, are you willing to put a name on this? Because not only is it a civil offense, it can be a criminal offense because you're talking about lives. There's reasons these applications are made to be filled out properly. So as we go down to assessment of potential adverse environmental impact, erosion controls provided. Now, they did include that, but they say they're gonna put silts in the drain. That's not gonna be enough for asbestos or any kind of removal. And to remind everybody, the confluence of the Middle River and Millbrook meet under here that stop the Blackstone River. So I'm sorry, I really believe that this has to go to a state, federal level. Then we go to the section D, historical or archaeological. Might any structure or site of historical or archaeological significance be affected by this project? And he marked "no." And now that's not even legally correct. Because in June of two thousand and sixteen, the city of Worcester's Historical Commission very clearly voted that this was the asset of the people of the city of Worcester and its removal would be detrimental to the resources. That is important. And Mr. Birch was there, so I don't know how he could put "no." And then when you go down to J, hazardous materials. Is the project located on a site that has a history of industrial or commercial uses that may have contaminated the soils? There is a fact that a tin roof made in that era can have a runoff of zinc, if not asbestos. So we don't have any evidence, any testing, not one ounce of testing to support any of this. And then as you go on, will the project manufacturer generate or store hazardous materials? No. But it says, "if so, indicate any fire department or public health certification." Then it says, "will it generate air pollution?" We all know asbestos is fine particles. That's why they're so strict. They can cause cancer in people. It's not just about covering trees. These ordinances and laws have to be followed for a reason. We can't just pick and choose. And then again, on the last page, Mr. Birch signs it. And I just wanted to note that at Five Salem Square, when you go to the property values of the city of Worcester, that it is made out of brick and stone, metal, tin, plaster. Asbestos could've been used in any of those plasters and any materials. And I know for a fact, I've seen a picture of a boiler that's in the church right now. Never mind, you know, the bell that's in there, six thousand pounds, that, you know, was already recovered for the people of the city of Worcester. And that's that. And just to wrap it up, on this, this project right here they're talking about, I find it interesting that he said it had been included in the original site plan, because that is not what was provided in the documentation. In fact, all the way up to two thousand and fourteen, I saw that property not being included in. So I don't know how he can say that and take the parking into account. And second of all, I noticed that in the paperwork, they can choose to turn the stores that they're proposing into apartments. There's a code of self in there. So who's to say that if, you know, the stores don't work out and somebody wants a luxury apartment, they can put it in there? Because downtown is supposed to be a place where we all congregate and, you know, we're exposed to cultural and artistic, environmental issues and things of that nature. I can assure you, not everyone wants a big, huge apartment complex downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna say, I mean, eight points for several items, so I'm gonna take a couple more points because I think the board gets a chance to guess. So, two more.
Thank you very much. I'm State Representative Mary Keat. And I just wanted to say how great it is to hear all the testimony here tonight. And I wanna applaud some of the groups that have worked so hard, thinking about downtown and thinking about our public places and how we protect them. Because I think over and over, that's what we're hearing tonight, that there's a lot of anxiety and a lot of anticipation over losing public place. So I'd like to applaud Preservation Worcester for the really hard work. And I'd like to also applaud the carpenters that are here tonight that really are the builders of our city, the workers of our city. And that they've been defending workers' rights downtown and fighting around wage theft. Now, I know we're not here tonight, but we're talking about a project in our downtown, something that we wanna look at and feel like it's part of what we have contributed to our city. When I walk across the street or in front of Notre Dame Church, I'm curious. And I identify with that building. I wanna know more about it. And it also makes me wanna belong in a different way in the city than this complex here does. Not to say that this is bad or whatever, but in comparison, the two things in terms of feeling like it's our downtown, it's my downtown, this is a public place I'd like to know more about, that isn't gonna happen. And I'd like to just close, because I think everybody has been so articulate. But I have this one quote, and it's something I hold on to because I think it's really important. It's by John Ruskin. And John Ruskin was an art critic and a philosopher, British philosopher. And he had something to say about thinking about when we build something. He said, "When we build, let it not be for present delights nor for present use alone. Let it be such work as our descendants will thank us for. And let us think that a time, that a time is to come when these stones will be held sacred because our hands have touched them and that men will say, as they look upon the labor and the wrought substance of them, 'See, this our fathers and mothers did for us.'" So thank you all for adhering to that.
Do one more on that. I'm gonna take five recesses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stuart Guzman from the Worcester Regional Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight regarding this project. This has been a property that's been discussed, debated at great length for the last probably twelve to eighteen months. Arguments, discussions over reuses, potential reuses, looking to find things to do with it. Here tonight, we have a proposal that will bring eighty-four market rate units as well as some additional retail space to the downtown. People living in those apartments will add to the density, vitality of our downtown. We'll build upon the momentum of creating an eighteen-hour downtown which brings with it people on the street, safety, security, people that are going to our entertainment locations, our restaurants, our retail stores downtown. People that help us, especially from the chamber, recruit more retail to downtown, add more options. So we are, I'm here tonight to support the proposal. I asked the board to hopefully support it as well and to move favorably on the proposal. Thank you.
Okay, so, I'm sure we've gone all night before this happened, business. So at some point, the board needs to make some deliberations. I will say, it's not an easy decision. I mean, the decision on the church was made a year ago, historic. This board can't stop it being destroyed, taken down. If they knocked down the building, you know, dumped out the church, say ten days, thirty days, they would come back with the same site plan. So it's unfortunate. It's a tough decision for the board, because it was pointed out this is a volunteer board, so. It's a discussion.
Excuse me, Chairman, if I just take one minor comment? Absolutely. I just would like to say that...
Just put the mic on.
Sorry. I just, I just wanna respond to one substantive comment that in connection with any demolition, we will comply completely with all state and federal regulations regarding environmental matters. We have and always will, and this project will be no different. So I just wanted to assure the board and the public that any environmental issues will be addressed, studied, and resolved accordingly. Thank you.
No, listen, that's, just going forward, you know, shouting after you, the audience, okay? Give the audience an opportunity to discuss it.
I would like to be heard as a citizen.
Well, I think we've probably, hold on. To develop a new building, I've been letting... To develop new building, I've been letting my...
It's not to do with church.
Okay, then one more on that, because at some point, we've got to make some decision, whichever it may be.
So...
Mr. Knight, go ahead, please.
My name is Manny Gines, and I live on thirty-four Holden Street, Worcester. I got a hat that I'm an organizer for the carpenters union, but I'm not here to talk about that. What I'm here to talk about is Mike Calley and the contractors that are doing the work on this, on this project. As you heard, other people, many of yous probably seen it in the news and, and a couple of articles that came out about it.
Are you just gonna get into discussions about labor workers, because I'm not...
Well, I'm not talking about labor workers. I'm talking about my taxes. I own a home, okay? And I gotta pay taxes. You raising my taxes, the city's raising my taxes. And meanwhile, these developers are coming in here and bringing contractors in here and paying people under the table, and they're not paying taxes. And they're hurting, screwing, the City of Worcester and screwing the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Okay, that's, that's not a discussion for the side panel here, unfortunately.
Well, unfortunately, and shame on these guys that haven't rectified that. They've been approaching, all they say is no comment.
All right, thank you. I'm not saying I'm more public comment at this point.
Just thirty, are you attorney?
Am I attorney now?
Why can't we be heard? Residents of the city, we have a right to be heard.
First of all, it's not a public hearing.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
We have a right to be heard.
It's not a public hearing.
We have a right to be heard.
It's a public meeting, it's not a public hearing. It is a discretion of the board in the head. We're going to take a second session and take one out.
You can't really shut people up.
We understand that everybody wants to talk about it, but we've got other business. We'll be here for another three hours, I think, four hours.
Continue the meeting, because you can't shut people up. So please continue.
Yeah, I found my accessory, I'm trying to get another play. It's a discretion of the chair. So just clarify that. Told you the board members, we will hear some more testimony, but we want to, first of all, limit it to one minute per person, and we don't want to get new stuff. I think, you know, again, reuse of the church and what could be done there, board has no control of that. What we're looking at tonight is the site plan that is before us. So we'll limit to that, we'll continue, we'll take a few more testimonies, just in reverberations of the same thing, as I say, we won't take any more public care. It's a discussion. That being said, next person? Say, limit to one minute, please. Otherwise, we'll be here all night.
Good evening, my name is Frank Taylor, I live at eleven Hancock Street, Worcester. I just want to talk about this project and the cost. I feel this project will cost more to the average prayer because of the stress that it'll cause on the services in this city, not to mention the congestion that's gonna cause in the area where the construction is gonna be held, it's gonna be done. Someone mentioned earlier about a fire in a building adjacent to where this construction project is gonna happen. Well, that's not the only thing that happened today. Someone told me that someone got hit by a car on Franklin Street, which is right here on the side. I don't know if you folks heard that or not today. I think there should be a cost estimate analysis from all the departments that this project will affect, police, fire, school department, Department of Public Works, or fiscal impact report, either or. Also, if this project goes through, from what you said, that this project is probably gonna go through, I would highly suggest that you get a police detail that's paid for by a developer outside, control traffic outside this project. That's all I have to say.
Typically, they would require that, please, I have to start. Okay, thank you for giving the call. So we want to hear everybody, we're gonna keep clapping for another ten seconds, it's just, you know, move on, so.
Joe Hartwellson, no, I just mean, I think it's unfair not to state your premise before the meeting, so people get caught short. I always speak later, because I like to often comment on what other people have said, or, you know, listen to what they've said before I speak. So of course, now, because of that, I am limited, because I can talk for one minute, which of course, I'm using up, telling you this. I think you can have people line up, sign up, there's all kinds of ways to control it, but to just say in the middle of the meeting, no, you can't speak, is totally outrageous. So I just want to make my point clear, so that everybody understands this. Could everybody, somebody with better organizational skills than I have, secure a space at the library, so we can, as a public, continue this meeting? Not tonight, but so that we can have a public space to speak altogether, because a huge amount of things need to be straightened out. Including, of course, the GoCarrillo that the city government is turning into, and I'm not referring to you, please, not referring to the planning board, but what the government in Worcester is turning into that causes all of this. We have a concentration camp of residential housing over here. It's, nobody's considering this. Nobody's monitoring anything in the city. It's turning into a very dangerous city, as the person said about the accident today, and someone told me it was a very bad accident out here, by the common on Franklin Street. And of course, no one has considered the pollution that is coming from all of this, and the cars, and the trains, and the buses. You know, you're gonna have to have a giant globe of ventilation over all of this concentration camp with extensive housing. I think we should sort of begin to take back the city. I'm sorry, I'm adjusting the audience, just a minute.
I think the concentration camp is probably not appropriate.
A concentration just means concentration. It doesn't matter who has money. I don't, I mean, I'm making it an analogy, but obviously, the people are not forcing it. These people have enough money to buy cheap housing and call it luxury. No reply to you, as a, in a sense, I just mean, it's a bad sight for everybody in the city, but I'm very anti-Catholic, but I belong to still to torn down. I also, of course, don't know, as a planning board, how it ever got in the condition it's in, because of, if you saw the photograph in the paper today, that's the first understanding I have of how it got boxed in when the big white buildings went up in the seventies, because I wasn't here. But it got boxed in beforehand, which means that, of course, fifty years later, they have to tear it down, because it has its front, it has its street. Worcester has no respect for any of its history. It basically hates its history, and you can see in full glory, you might say, how it treats its history and its people who make this history. So I think Worcester should take several steps back and consider everything. But basically, again, people, we need to have a public meeting. And nobody has to share it, we can just, you know, behave civilly, if somebody could set up a meeting at the library and then post a note in the paper or in City Hall or on the website or something. But we need to be able to...
This is not, I apologize, but I, timeout. Okay, I apologize, I really do. Okay, but the young lady that was here made reference to the fact that we're sitting here as volunteers of the City of Worcester. I've been doing this for nine years, as a volunteer for the City of Worcester for nine years. I'm the zoning board, and I'm planning board, and I plan to do this for another ten years. Okay? I am just as committed to this city as everybody sitting in this room. I care deeply about what's going on in the city, I care about the redevelopment of the city, I care about the survival of the city, and I don't want to become a community, okay, that doesn't care about their city. So some of the comments that were made about, and I don't want to rehash, but it's a little insulting to us, sitting here as board members, okay, that we don't care about what's happening in the city. And I truly appreciate every single person that's in this room coming in to voice your opinion. And I would sit here all night and listen to everybody, okay, because that's how compassionate I am about this city. But what I'm hearing is that people are defending the church and the developer's right to develop a project. And I haven't seen this large of a group in any of the other projects that we've proposed or that are being developed, not even a tenth of this size. Okay, and I guess I'm wondering, and the chairman brought this up at the beginning of this meeting, and said that if we're here to defend the church, this is not the forum to do that. We're not tasked with that, we can't make that decision. So I feel that it's being a little disrespectful, that we're sitting here as volunteers of the city, trying to preserve the city and to do right by the city, okay? And that we're gonna wind up sitting here for the whole night, which I will, if I'm hearing testimony on the project itself. I've sat into meetings till eleven, eleven-thirty at night as a volunteer, okay? But what I'm hearing is why we should preserve the church and why, why, and I'm, I think that structure is absolutely gorgeous, okay? I met my wife in downtown Worcester, it's a, it's a great place to be, and my personal beliefs on whether the church should be demolished or not, what we're here to listen to. Okay, those decisions have already been made, and the chairman brought that up. And now we're talking about, you know, a lot of other things, other than what we have to do here, okay? And you're talking about having public meetings and all of these other things. I am just willing to listen to any other person that wants to discuss this petition. I will sit here until midnight, if we have to. Okay, but that's not what we're hearing. And I appreciate you all coming down, and I appreciate the compassion, and I care just as much about the city as you do. Okay? But we need to finish this meeting, okay? And I will sit as long as it takes, and I'm not gonna cut somebody off, but when you start talking about having other public meetings and items that don't pertain to this petition, I don't think it's fair to us. Okay, so, so I'm willing to listen, but please keep the issues that pertain to the petition itself, and I'll sit here as long as it takes, myself, I don't know about the rest of the board, and I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the board, but if you have something that pertains to this petition, okay, and how it looks and the project downtown and all your concerns about safety and pollution and all those things are legitimate concerns, and we bring them up every single time we hear a petition, we talk about it, okay? We're a pretty intelligent group of people, and we want what's best for the citizens of Worcester also, okay? And that's me talking as a citizen. Now me talking as a board member, I want to listen to what pertains to this petition and not the other things that have been coming up. So if we can keep it to that and move forward, I would really appreciate it.
Well, that is what I have been talking about, in a term of evolution. I'm talking about this project added to all of the other projects that have taken place. So that's exactly what I'm talking about. But as long as you've mentioned the other thing, I will say that, because I went to the other meetings, I will say that in my opinion, and I've gone to a lot of meetings, it was thought as a tear down. We know that. If you don't believe that, you can watch the Historic Commission meeting, and I can hear online. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Dave Menageon, I'm a, I live in Worcester on Glendale Street. I was born here, and I respect the amount of time that you have. I agree, Mr. Chairman, with your fellow board member, we know you all care, and we care as well. I can say, well, I shouldn't, I care about this city. I have some questions about the application, and I think because you care, I think there have been a lot of issues brought up about the application, and I think they need to be addressed. I want to start with a question that was raised earlier about whether or not this is a pre-approved site plan or an amendment to a site plan. Mr. Chairman, I don't think we got an adequate answer about that. What I heard was, I believe this is. That's not good enough? I think we need, this is a new site plan or this is an amendment to a site plan? And personally, I think this should be a new site plan. This is a new project, this is a new parcel, this is a new building. We should have a new site plan, not an amendment to a site plan. So that's my first...
Mr. Chairman, the applicant filed as a new site plan. The review criteria and the information submitted is identical in either case, your consideration is identical, whether it's an amendment or a new site plan. But it was filed as a new site plan. The cover letter that accompanied it at one point referred to it as an amendment, but it was filed as a new site plan.
Okay, thank you. Just two more. Looking at the application, on page ten C, it states that the project is not within five hundred feet of open space recreation, public land or conservation land. So I believe that Mr. Calm is right across the street, which would be within five hundred feet.
I concur.
Yeah, so I'm not really quite sure why that erroneous, why that was put on erroneously. I'd like that to be corrected. And secondly, about the project impact statement that was read, the applicant say that the project, they claim that the project, and I quote, "will not exceed the volumes projected as part of the overall city square development." And that's pertaining to the traffic. Now, we've heard a lot of traffic concerns around here tonight, and it was also mentioned that there was a previous study relating to city square, and I think that's what this is relating to. We've had also other commentators talk about Worcester's in a boom, and I agree, Worcester is in a boom. You look around all the development adjacent to city square, you have the Edge with two-hundred-and-fifty-one students living there, you have the Homewood Suites with a hundred-and-eighteen bedroom units, you have the Grid with five-hundred-and-forty-three units. That is all adjacent to city square. No one would have predicted that development previously. However, all of us know, driving down Foster Street at three-thirty, when I'm taking a left turn on a Tuesday to get onto Front Street, sometimes it takes two or three cycles for that light to go through before I can take that left turn. That's a problem. Development is good, we just need, I'm just concerned that we're using an old traffic plan that does not address the realities of today's traffic situation. You know, that's also not included in Mercantile Center with the over four hundred jobs that are gonna be there. This is all great and good, however, I just don't want to willy-nilly move forward, and I think, and I know you guys really think about these things, and so I would really like to see a new traffic study that's related to the current conditions of traffic in downtown Worcester.
Okay, I think that in the store, a lot of the boards are, it's like schools and the same thing impacts a lot of traffic in schools and so forth.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna quit, I'm just...
Well, the board's talked a lot about the developments and the impacts and a lot of the traffic with schools, so it is kind of, on a long-term, laid out, to look at these things, for the city's situation.
Okay, so you're saying that the current situation does not need to be studied in the whole...
No, it's long-term, I wouldn't say long-term, but they're up. At some point, we need to go back and revisit.
Yeah, but Mr. Truman, I think what you're referring to is that, given the amount of growth that's occurring in the city now, we've recognized that it's, it's time to update our comprehensive plan, actually, might as well call it, create a new comprehensive plan. So the city manager and the city council authorized funding to do that, we'll be starting that process this year, and this board will be centrally involved. In Massachusetts, the planning board is really the body that directs the development of the comprehensive plan.
I don't want to be paying for that. I think the developers should be paying for the traffic study. They're gonna be putting up the project, they're the ones who are gonna be creating the congestion with the new project. That does not make any sense to me, and I'd like to see that done before this project is approved. Thank you for your service.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just comment on, so just so you know, in the last meeting, or two meetings ago, we actually brought that up to the, to the city to ask, I requested the exact same thing that you brought up, so I appreciate your comments on that, it's something that has been a concern of ours, and we did request it, and I believe it was brought before the city council as a result of that, so thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is George Davis, I live on two-twelve Dewey Street. I'm a Worcester native, lived here all my life, was born here. And I'm also a member of Worcester Socialist Alternative. So frankly, I, the Notre Dame church sounds nice, but personally, that's not what I'm here for, that's not my prerogative, that's not what I care about. What I care about is the history of the, of wage theft and the abuse of workers, that the developers who are proposing this site plan, to expand their site plan, that that is not an acceptable thing to do. The abuses that the workers on the one-fort-five-Fourth Street project have been, that those workers have been undergoing cannot continue, we must not allow it to be, those abuses to be expanded further by allowing the site to go through. The development, and this development of market rate housing, as it's called, is nothing more than gentrification and indicates an intentional attack and disregard for workers in Worcester. These houses do not help the majority of people in Worcester. This does not solve the affordable housing crisis that we have nationally and in Worcester as well. And both of these problems that I've mentioned, they must be opposed, and they must be, and we must adamantly defend and improve the lives of people in Worcester. And Worcester Social Alternative demands that, in order to do that, in order to improve those lives in a concrete way, that whether the Notre Dame churches are restored or torn down and replaced with new apartments, the workers on this site must be unionized, pay a living wage, and have their rights defended. If housing units are built, they must be affordable, accessible to all, publicly owned and publicly operated, so that they provide a genuine and much-needed service for the workers of Worcester. We cannot, we cannot allow these private developers to come in, absorb wealth from our city, and take it elsewhere, and do nothing with it. our city and take it elsewhere and do nothing with it, not actually provide growth, as you say, and produce these houses that do not serve the majority of the people in Worcester, do not actually improve the lives, that are just going to go to waste because we already have luxury apartments or market rate housing that is not used. This housing, this space cannot be wasted on market rate housing. It needs to be affordable, it needs to be used to actually help the people of Worcester. And that's not what these developers want to do.
My name is Gary Byers. I lived on Prophet Street in Worcester for 10 years now. In the impact statement, it says there's one fire hydrant across from Trumbull Street in a, in the light of horrible recent fires of wood frame construction buildings. I'm a, I was wondering if we need more hydrants in case of emergency. I do believe there was a, a fire in the, on Front Street side today and I think that should be looked into. I'd like to request that the fire department produce a report about whether there are enough hydrants and whether there is sufficient access to fight the fires. Do we have anything on that?
Mr. Chairman, the fire department reviewed the proposal and did not have any comments on that.
Yeah, I mean, it didn't have.
The, the one comment the fire department had was on access to the building and wanted to see the, the second driveway from Church Street.
We are, I agree with your statement, but the frame is an issue which we assume at some point the fire department's going to have to address in the short run.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Street and I live at I E, L I, K Lane. I just wanted to touch on the, the traffic situation. I have two quotes here. One, this news article quoted that the chair of the Worcester redevelopment authority is saying that traffic flow around Washington Square Road is a complete disaster. And also, the head of Shusbury Street Napoleons Association agreed and said something has to be done with the traffic pattern because of the congestion that occurs during morning and evening rush hour. So I just wanted to make way to those points. It's going to be a traffic center.
Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Ostrow. I'm a principal with Ostrow Electric Company. We're union contractors, have been in the city for eight decades. I've been a resident all my life and I have great concerns about how union contractors like myself are supposed to be able to fairly compete against out of state subcontractors who are allowed to get away with wage cheating and paying overtime wages in cash and in violation of federal fair wage standards. To address Mr. Freyler's comments about the fate of the church party being decided and that that's not before this board, you've, you've been presented with a petition tonight that in four different places, on four different pages, asked if this project has any type of historical, cultural, or architectural significance. There's slightly different wording, but all four times, the application inaccurately states, no, there is no historical significance. To me, that alone justifies this committee not approving the petition. And if, if that question had been checked, yes, there is historical significance, architectural significance, cultural, I assume that question is there because that's determined to your deliberations. And if the application is rejected tonight and resubmitted with that question answered accurately, then what does this board do about that? What, if you're asking the question, I guess it's pertinent to your deliberation, deliberations and I hope that you will pursue the architectural, historical, and cultural significance of an accurate answer because obviously demolition of church would be devastating for Worcester's architectural legacy. Thank you.
Kevin Cassen, a long time Worcester resident, actually born in St. Louis. I've been before this committee often, just as a, as a audience member, many, many times through the years, something small, something large. But I knew this was an important meeting and I wanted to come in and as the guidance has been, to stay on topic. So I went back to the charter and I went back to the, the rules for this committee, for this board, so I could make sure I understood the power you have, the abilities you have, the abilities you don't have. And that, that's important for us for this conversation. I was surprised, even though I've been here so much, to really learn, looking at the charter and the rules, that you folks really are the preeminent board in the city of Worcester. Preeminent in terms of power, but also just in the first place in the, in the, in the chain in economic development. The place that, the board that's been empowered to have first look at everything. And Mr. Freyler, having been here many, many years, you, you've seen a lot. And so I want to applaud you and yet still encourage you to, to do your due diligence on this project as, as much as you ever have on any other project. And certainly, it is the norm of this board to, to ask for reports and say, we need some more information on that, or could one of the departments look into this a little more depthfully? We don't have as much as we, we would like. And so I really want to encourage you to look at that and do you have everything you should have in order for this project to move forward at this time? I, I'm troubled by the number of times I've heard staff saying, I think, or maybe, or it seems like in this case. In the past, I'm accustomed to having much more definitive responses from staff as opposed to the maybes. And so it concerns me that we're not sure if the old policies, the old research from before from the City Square project really does apply to this or not. We should all know as a community. And that's for your due diligence, but what I learned from looking at the charter and the rules is your due diligence is for the whole community and for all the boards and commissions that, that will follow. So you're, you have the ability to ask for reports from every single, every single department in the city of Worcester, but not just that, from every single board or any other commission in the city of Worcester. And that's done so, not so that you have, not only you have all the information you need, but so that the community, so that we have all the information we need as this project moves forward and as every other board and commission in zoning and looks at this project has everything on the table from start, whether it's the fire department, the school department, and what have you. So, so I, it was good for me to see that and look at that and I, I really wanted to flag that because I really do hope that we're doing due diligence on this project, not just for this board, but for, for all the boards and for all the, the community folks. With that, I just want to wrap up by saying, as a, I'm a resident of the Piedmont neighborhood and so I live very close to Chandler Elementary School, which is the elementary school serving this area. And I know you mentioned that you, you talked at school about schools of recent meaning. Chandler Elementary School is struggling right now. It's, it's hard enough and it's one of the poorest schools in the city, but the enrollment at Chandler Elementary School was 350 students in 2012, 350. The current enrollment in that school as of today, 507. So that's the jump in that school that's been, that's poor, struggling, dealing with level four stuff in the past. I looked at this, the school budget for this coming year. Because of the overproving at Chandler Elementary School, Worcester, the Worcester schools paid $204,264 per year to rent additional space for the students that are attending that school. We send buses to bus kids from the school to the YMCA and are renting out space at the YMCA. That's in addition, in addition to the, the trailers that are parked in the parking lot there, removing play space from the school so the kids are there. So these projects that we keep approving downtown are packing my school deeper and deeper with youth and now they're overflowing and we're paying $204,000 plus dollars for that. So I don't think it's, it's, it's acceptable for us to look at the long-term effect. There's an effect that's been hurting the children in this school who aren't able to learn as easily as they might if they weren't in classrooms and being bused to a different location. So I, I would like you folks to file those reports and ask for those reports. I would like this developer, not the city, the city's already absorbed all the costs of all the staff going, doing this. Other, other communities wouldn't have absorbed this cost even, but this developer should be paying for, for the traffic studies. This developer should be paying so we can understand how are we going to create a bus stop downtown for these youth, because there is no bus stop for these youth downtown right now. I want these folks to pay that. And so let's get those reports from each of those departments and I ask you, please, ask for those reports so all of us, not just you can do your due diligence, but help us to do our due diligence. Thank you.
Questions from board?
I mean, not yet. The property, the board, I'm sure is aware, is not on the state register of historic places and is therefore under legal protection with respect to store value. So I don't know specifically why it wasn't checked off, but that certainly is one potential reason, my assumption is that's why.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that. So the specific criteria in the zoning ordinance is, that you can consider in terms of historic impacts is how, I'll actually read it so I get the language correctly, that's probably the, the best way to do it. Your criteria number 14 under site plan review is conformance and compatibility of the site plan design and structures listed in the most recent state register, state register of historical places. The Notre Dame church is not listed on the state register of historic places. So the Worcester Common is on the state and national register of historic places and that's why in my review comments, we discussed the importance of thinking, this board thinking about how the building or the layout, the architecture relates to that, to that piece of property. And the applicant had made changes over time to address the comments that staff had provided. So hopefully that clarifies it.
Okay. So it's just, the authority staff proposed that just a mass measure then?
So we included a, we included the listing from the Massachusetts Cultural Resources Information System, which is a database that includes many historic properties, but it is not the state register of historic places. Further, there are not specific criteria for inclusion on that list, so properties that are not of particular historic interest are, can be, and are included on that list as well.
Where is the list of, how is this registered without a state?
The, the Marcus list is the list that our historical commission uses as their trigger for the demolition delay ordinance in the city. And that's something that we've discussed with the commission in terms of moving forward and thinking about different, different triggers for, for that review. But that's a different, it's a different listing than the state register of historic places, which is the one that's specifically identified in the zoning ordinance.
So just let me, just let me understand this because I thought that was very significant considering all the questions that came up. So the item number 4D, the check mark saying no is correct.
The, the section questioning the application, I believe at the beginning of the application says, in the proponent's opinion, how would they affect these various items? And the purpose behind that is to provide information to the board for your discussion and decision-making. Again, it's in the proponent's opinions, that's the first thing to keep in mind is, is, is their opinion. That being said, the purpose of it is so that at this meeting, we can have a discussion about those items and there are certainly cases where the board is going to disagree with something that the proponent put on the application that happens quite frequently. It's up to you to decide whether that should have been checked differently, but regardless, you had the discussion about it and you can factor that into your decision-making. It's, you know, it, it didn't affect your discussion to decide in one way or another, I don't think. It's up to you to decide, but.
I just want to make sure that the application is right, so that's my concern is that if they love historic importance and they were saying no, and if you're saying that it's not registered at the state level and this is only pertaining to those which are state level registered, then I'm okay with it. But I just wanted to make sure that the answer is right. I mean, the land board, I mean, the division of planning and the board would definitely go through the applications and justify the answer if it's right.
So again, the question is the applicant's opinion. I can't tell an applicant if their opinion is correct or not. That's for them to decide. You can agree or disagree with it, it's a board member and staff can agree or disagree with it. We made comments about the proximity of the development of the Worcester Common because that is, it's actually not a structure, but it's a facility that's on the state and national register of historic places. So we thought it was important for the board to consider how the layout of the facility relates to the common. So that's, that was a recommendation we made to you. Again, I, I mean, I, I don't want to dwell on an item on an application. You can certainly disagree with how they, they checked the box. It doesn't affect your deliberations. We're talking about it right now. So in a way, it had the intended purpose. We're having a discussion along with all the testimony that was provided on how the site layout relates to the other historic resources in the area.
Could I make a comment?
Please.
Yeah, why? Is that the board's trying to deliver this point of view?
I just wanted to say that I think the, the church is eligible for listing on the national register and the state register according to the criteria, but we do need the approval of the owner for that listing. So there are properties that aren't listed, that haven't been listed, that still are historic.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can I say one thing?
No.
I just wanted a clarification from Mr. Rawl.
Okay.
Regarding why on the application, it says consult the local historic, the Worcester Historical Commission. So why would it be there if it meant on a state, on a different level? Like, why would it say consult when we all know it was already deliberated and found to be an asset of the people of Worcester? I'm just wondering why his explanation would not be involved with that. And I wanted to point out too, there were several places where they checked. In fact, one of them, they didn't check anything for historical relevance, so it's not just one box, it's multiple boxes.
It is not saying that consult, it's saying it's advised to consult.
Right.
So it's up to them, it's up to them. It's not saying mandatorily that they have to consult.
No, but it's.
It's a clause that's being offered to them.
Right.
What you are saying is not right, it's not saying that you got to consult.
I'm saying, when you're, when you're checking an answer and it says advised to check the Worcester Historical Commission, I'm just questioning why it would say that when we all know what the answer is had they done that and since they were there, I would imagine they knew. And then Mr. Rawl says it's on a different level. That's what I'm trying to point out. And then I just wanted to point out one of the things is when you're saying a box is checked, it's not just one box. There were several spaces where it was purposely checked, no, and, and other places, there was nothing. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that is some.
Can I just, can I just point out one thing, which that this, this property went before the city's historical commission. There was a public process in place with respect to that and, you know, the demolition was implemented and it's now expired. And so that, that process took place before the historical commission. It is now.
As I say, it's a matter, maybe you can read some of the application, check out the boxes. Does it just change the site design, does it change the plan?
Well, those trigger chapter nine, section 13 of Worcester local city ordinances that when they need that.
You tried to talk about.
Would you say?
No, no. It's a part of the.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make point that there was an ordinance.
Again, part of the ordinance, okay? Thank you. So I think at this point, yeah. Can I just ask a quick question? Who was the owner of the church?
Yeah, yeah.
The applicant now owns the church?
Uh, yeah, with a contract purchase.
From the diocese or who owns?
Uh, City Square Development.
From the diocese or the development?
So they're the master developer for the entire project at City Square.
Can you just tell me what, what this project will pay the city of Shusbury taxes a year?
I don't have that information, lady. But obviously it will create ratables for the city.
Last question.
Last question, what's the timeline for this project?
Once we receive the approval, assuming we are fortunate enough to obtain an approval, we will begin the process for demolition and destruction.
Is the permit necessitated for the demolition of the church from this?
No, through the chair, the property owner can, or the purchaser can obtain a demolition permit without any subsequent approval.
Take the building, apply for demo permit from the building department, take the church down, and then most of this discussion is probably going to be a different discussion. And again, I want the audience to completely understand, my personal feelings on the church are not at hand here, and all I'm doing is pointing out that we don't have control over that, and that if they want to go and apply for a permit right now, they can go apply for a permit, take the church down tomorrow morning. So, and then the discussion is all the other points about the taxation on the school department and all of the other things that could be a result of this project, our part in that. And if you've been to any of the other prior meetings, you'll see that I bring that up time and time again. So it is a concern of this board, making sure that our kids get a great education in the city of Worcester, so, but that's not the issue at hand here tonight. And so we have to make a decision on whether to approve the project, and not based on the merit of the application, not based on the merit of whether the church should or shouldn't come down, but whether or not it's a valid application before us for the construction of this project, and what is it going to do for the city and the tax roll and all of the other things, which I'm hoping will help the school department, because I do support the school system and the schools, and they are in need of additional support to help our kids get a better education, but that's not what's before us, so...
That's a hard question. A hand to tie, it is by right, so I have a question.
Has it missed? That's all I'm going to say, excuse me.
It's a typical way of putting that in my voice, isn't it?
Mr. Chair, there are no special permits or verances required. I'm not sure I understand the question.
Could you use the microphone, please? Yeah, well, Mr. Pride, I'm just going to respond into the next meeting, I'm just trying to figure out what the board will gain from...
I would advise the board, if you're not ready to make a decision, you would need to have a discussion with the applicant about other information pertinent to your review criteria that you need.
Through the chair, I don't know, I just have a couple of questions. My first is, there was in Staff Manual number four, an issue regarding whether or not the commercial space was going to be kept for potential use as residential units. Is it the position of planning that that should be commercial space and not be able to be reserved for residential units? Because the benefit, and I thought the power of development downtown was to bring a mixed use, so I don't know why we allow them to reserve it, I don't know if that was addressed or not, I know it's in full island, the developer has addressed that, given the information regarding that.
Through the chair, from a planning perspective, we would prefer to see mixed-use development. There is nothing in the zoning ordinance that requires it, so we cannot require the developer to set aside a specific amount of retail development. For instance, they have agreed to allocate some space on the first floor for retail uses, at least for an initial period of time. They'd have to comment on how long their intention is to try to market that for retail space, but there's nothing in our zoning regulations that give us the ability to dictate that.
Follow up on my question, if it's in the plan, then it is commercial space. If they were going to change that to residential, would they have to come back to force for amendment to the site plan?
Because like that's not saying that we're residential. I was assuming that...
I don't believe, and I ask the Building Department to weigh in if there's another opinion. I don't believe so, because the site plan is focused on the design and layout of the building, so if they were not making substantive changes to the layout and design of the building, then it would not require a site plan amendment. You can change a use without any sort of site plan consideration.
Site plan and site, we tell you, so, change that.
However, responding to your question regarding the retail, we have no issue with making good faith efforts to attempt to rent the space for some period of time, which we can work out with the city. I mean, if there's a tenant, a retail tenant, that's viable for the property, we have no issue with that.
And a different question, I guess as part of the ordinance, over this year, the late area for the demolition permit, there is, it's done basically, so you could work or people could come forward and propose a way to preserve this, or have someone come to you to buy the property to preserve the church. Did anyone come forward and offer to purchase the church, preserve it, present a feasible economical plan to the owners, to your knowledge, to preserve the church and redevelop it?
No one has presented a feasible economic proposal. There have been some discussions I've had directly with Deborah, we've offered her the opportunity to walk through the church again a few weeks ago, she called yesterday to our head of construction, and I'm still willing to allow that to happen.
And I guess my next question is, because this is part of it, the design of the building, the architectural structures, and the material being used, since this site does have some significance, it may not be historic, but it does have some significance to the church, was there any thought put into the design of this property to incorporate some of the architectural designs? Now, I'm not saying use that building, but in your design, to incorporate some of the architectural design of the church to make it, you know, resemble or, I guess, a tribute to the Notre Dame Church in developing this. And I know this design is now, is, you know, the popular design, for lack of a better term, I'm not an architect, obviously, but this seems to be the trend of these type of buildings being built today. But because of this site, and again, you can answer this question, was there any consideration in the design of the building to incorporate some of the architectural designs of the Notre Dame Church, and specifically, because the renderings don't show, the side of the building facing the common where that is historical, to design something on that side of the building to take into consideration the historical significance, I won't say site, because it's not a historical site, but the significance of that church, to kind of, you know, pay a tribute, so to speak, to that property?
I think that what we've been discussing recently, as someone raised that issue, we are considering incorporating some of the elements of the church within the building itself.
Would you say, through the chair, incorporating some of the elements, can you just elaborate?
There's a, I think we're considering, there's the church bell, we were going to use that maybe in the park, we were maybe going to incorporate some stained glass, so that's all in consideration and discussion right now, someone has previously raised that.
Yeah, can you describe to me what the facade is going to be on the side of this building, because I can't tell from these renderings, the side of this building, what is going to be the design facing the common?
Mark, why don't you, could you address that?
You can see it right to the left.
Is it the top right hand corner?
Right. Brick, metal panel, and fiberglass panel.
And I guess with the chair, was there any consideration, like I said before, trying to incorporate some of the design features of the Notre Dame Church on that side into that side of the building, other than putting the standard, you know, tin, aluminum panel veneers on that side? Is that something feasible? Is that something that was considered? Yes, through the chair, through the developer.
I have to go revisit that with our architect, but our intent goes to the possible use of elements of the church.
Through the chair, I would, I would strongly second the suggestion that's given by my colleague here, John, that something like to, knowing the sentiment of people here about this place and the church, which has been an iconic place for the city, if someone came in and saw the route that it came from, would be, you know, would be certainly a good thought to honor the sentiments also, also probably makes you feel good. I understand, you know, I'd like to make a little comment, with your permission, to let the audience know that we've been listening to everyone, and it's very nice of each one of you to come and, you know, present these views about this place that you have, you have here in our city. I've been in this city for 35 years, I have two sons who were born and brought up here, my business, which is started here, so I have a very strong emotion attached with this city, and certainly I feel the same way if I'm on the other side of the table, you know, what you feel about this place. But I'm here to do a job for why I'm sitting on this chair, and certainly I have a different responsibility here, but I do understand your sentiment and do feel that how important it is. But I think there was demolition delay that was given, and that expired in April 15, 2017. I think probably all of us should have gone to the right authorities, right board, to make sure that this doesn't happen. This is not the board that probably can make, you know, you're making a voice to a board that probably cannot do much about it, but we have a responsibility to look at the site plan and see if there is any mistake or anything that we don't let the plan go or it goes. I thank you very much for giving all your sentiments, but probably this is not the board that can really make an impact on what we listen to you, but we certainly feel the same way as you do about this place. But we have this in front of us, and all of you are going to make the decision on that basis. But I would certainly recommend to honor the sentiment of people of this, you know, you come from Malden, we all live here, and I think that's what we feel, that something that should show how this place was before for our children to recognize it.
Understood, and we will certainly consider that. Thank you.
Can I just say one thing, just listening to everybody, and, sorry, I don't want to go far again. I think that there was a lot said, a lot said about Notre Dame, but I learned a lot about the city and our planning, and things that are concerned, that you're all concerned about and have been raising, and I don't know if we need to do that before we continue to approve, and I think you said it well, is there any way that we can take and look at what we need to do? So the transportation, the schools, and all that I know is going on with the city, but I think that a lot of that has to be taken into consideration before we add another 84 apartments and another set of retail space. So I just take that, just sitting back, listening, I'm, you know, I do like the idea of incorporating a piece of Notre Dame, of course, I'd love to see it still standing and then built around it, but I think just overall for the city and the expenses that we're incurring, just to make sure that we're not with Choose Grade that can't take another student into their school. So maybe those studies need to happen before we even move forward. That's just a last comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been on the board for several years, the last couple of years, and I think it's made a closer look at the sudden frac expansion in the city, which is great, but the city has been, probably a lot, should be minimal, but it is what it is, and we can make best of what we can do. I guess paranormal comment, no testimony. With the waiver, the reason I first, sue you on the waiver. Motion on the waiver?
Mr. Chair, make the motion to accept the request of whoever to release the bonus, bonus to a resident 300 feet of the property.
Second?
Second.
Favor? I... Motion approved. Another motion on the site plan?
Mr. Chair, make the motion to accept the definitive site plan for 57 square with all the conditions recommended, and the recommendation from the DPW comments.
Second?
Second.
On favor? Motion approved. Second.
Thank you very much.